Okay. Can, because I did talk with Chuck before. Apparently, something happened between when Chuck joined. Can everybody hear us now?
Yes.
Okay.
My only concern would be advertising it. Since people may be used to meeting in Bennington, at the Firehouse rather, or now at the Firehouse. I just want to make sure that we are properly advertising the change. That way, folks will know that we're here, rather than the Firehouse.
Okay.
And maybe have it be a hybrid like this, where you have Zoom as one option. And if you want to come in person, that's fine, too.
Okay. So to recap, for those individuals who couldn't hear us, just to kind of back up, because apparently there was a technical issue. The discussion on the agenda, we are on the line item concerning Town Meeting Day and Location. And we are requesting for this year, instead of meeting at the Firehouse in downtown Bennington for the floor meeting, to move our location. Are you getting an echo if you're online?
It's from somebody's phone.
I think it's from here.
Yes.
The plan is to move the location, keeping it March 4th, which is that Monday Town Meeting Day, but moving the location to here, Southwest Tech, the Assembly Room. And it would be hybrid, to address the concern. It would be hybrid, both Zoom and/or in-person. And it would be at 5:30 PM. That would allow community members to join us via Zoom for all the districts we serve, not just the town of Bennington, which is what happens when we go to the Bennington floor meeting. So this would allow all districts that we serve to be able to participate via Zoom or in-person. It would be for this year, while this H-42 legislation has been passed, that allows us to do this this year, that expires in July of 2024. Last year, the other schools in our community did this. We were the only ones that went to the Firehouse. SVSU's Mount Anthony and SVSU's Elementary School held their meetings off-site, not at the Firehouse. And so, we're asking to do the same thing this year. And we chose 5:30 to avoid the conflict with other schools and the actual town meeting that starts at 7:00 PM in Bennington. To address Asher's concern about advertising, it would be written very clearly in our warning for the town meeting that we do every year. We have to have the location stated in there and the time. And when we send out information about our annual report, it's on that postcard about our town meeting or our annual meeting as well. And that goes to all voters within our district. So not just Bennington, but all of our districts, they receive a postcard. So that information certainly will be out there. It'll be in the newspaper. It'll be all the, at the town halls where we post our warning. So it definitely will be on our website. So the information will be out there, as long as the board approves that location change.
And a little bit of information that comes out on Wednesday. I think you need to add a little bit, put something in there to bring attention. I think that'd be worth it, too. I think the good idea, though, is that if people want to go to Portis, Manchester, and town meetings, they will have the opportunity to watch us or come here at 5:30 and go to the run itself. And I think that's really fair enough. It doesn't look like it's the best, you know, even on the career.
Okay. So Chuck is telling me the sound is not good. Leon, you're muted.
Yeah, it's just the mic seemed to be too far away from the table or whatever.
Give us a thumbs up if you can hear us, DJ.
Okay.
Oh, good.
Chuck, can you hear us okay now, or is it still?
There's Tim here, Chris.
But the, the on and off might be muted, and the fact that you're mute is like, this is only your last call, which is why it's hard to hear people. It looks like the... Yeah, oh, there you go, that's my top, yes. And then mute yourself, that might, now I see the green.
Okay, so I'm going to ask for one member that's online. So TJ, can you just respond with verbal answer or anything?
Respond one again?
We just wanted to make sure that we could hear from people who are online because of the technical issues, but we could hear you fine, so thank you.
Okay.
So, back to the chair. I'm looking for, I guess, a possible motion for the relocation.
Okay, can we have a motion to relocate the meeting for Monday, March 4th, right here at 5:30?
So moved.
I'm second. I'm second. Any more discussion? Okay.
Yes, suggest.
Sing none, okay, all in paper?
Aye.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, approval, action, equipment purchase. You want to give us a background on this?
Yes. And you have a paper with you in your cabinet, right?
Yeah. Yeah, there's no bucket with this one, apparently. There isn't this one.
No bucket?
Yeah.
And what I'm sharing right now, and hopefully, if you're online, you can see it. Those of you here in person have a copy of it. There is a grant that we are a sub-recipient of for the town of Bennington. They received this grant. And we have a sub-grant that our adult ed, Rob Beany, had come in and spoke to you about, that had some segments that had to do with farming and tractor and culinary skills. So this is part of that grant. The purchase would be for a tractor, using the grant funds that were built into and approved by HUD, which is who issued the grant to the city, to the town of Bennington. Just a little information. We did try to seek bids first. We technically do not have to seek bids, because the purchase price is under $40,000. And a bid process is $50,000. But we did try to seek bids. We didn't receive any response for any of those companies we sent a bid to. So the next step was to move to actually searching and shopping and dealerships. What you see here is, the first one listed is a 2021 John Deere Compact Utility Tractor. And this is the one we're asking for your approval to purchase through this grant. The price is $38,995. There is a delivery fee, but it's cheaper to have them deliver than it is for us to send two people up there and have them have a trailer and have to drive all the way to Fort Vermont, load it on a trailer and drive it back. So we're explaining I'm trying to use the delivery fee and have them deliver the tractor. Again, that additional funding would come from part of the grant. This particular tractor has 167 engine hours. It does have the loader. It has mechanical front-wheel drive, which is half-cap WD, power reeder, and 66 horsepower. Shopping for comparisons. I've listed three out of, I think, our adult ed person went and found at least five of the three closest comparisons we found. Here, the 2019 John Deere. This one has 280 engine hours. And the price is, out of the ballpark for what the grant is allowing us, the price is $54,000. There is a 2015 John Deere. It does not have a bucket. The price is $33,899, but as you can see, the engine hours are much greater than the one we want to select. And then one in East Winter, Connecticut. It's a 2019. It also has the loader. But again, it has more engine hours on it. And the price is close, $37,999. But again, it has more engine hours. And having our forestry instructor take a look at that one, the tires that are currently on it that would help with it are not the right tires needed for the area they've been using the tractor. So that would be an incurred cost after the tractor's purchased. So they're asking for your approval to select and allow us to purchase the 2021 John Deere 4066 Compact Utility Tractor. Again, the funding would come from the town of Bennington Community Project Funding Grant. And that's what we're asking for the board after discussion, if you would make an action to approve that purchase.
We have a motion, to make the motion to approve payment of the 2021 John Deere. Second. Any discussion on this? This is going to be used by the forestry program?
This will be used by the forestry program, yes. And there's going to be an adult ed training, and the forestry instructor will be doing that for the tractor training as well. So it'll be a dual purpose.
I just want to say, I think it's fantastic that there were going to be more opportunities in the area of agriculture through Southwest Tech. So I'm happy that this tractor is being purchased and hope it serves Southwest Tech well for many, many years.
Anything else, comments? Does Leon have a comment? Okay, sing none, all in paper of the purchase of this 2021 John Deere 4066 sale.
Aye.
Thank you. Valid warning. This is something that people have to come in and sign?
So yes, the question that the chair asked is, is this something where we would need your signature? And we would do, we would need a quote-unquote "wet" signature, so a live signature on this warning. So if it is approved, those people here in person, I'll ask you to sign it. I'll send it around. Those people online, I'm going to ask you to please either call in to Sandy or myself to see if we can make an arrangement where we can have you stop in if you're in the area to sign this document. And if you need some assistance in trying to get this document to you to sign, we could certainly work some arrangements out. We need wet signatures. We tried to use digital last year, and we were told that digital signature would not hold up for this warning, that we need a wet signature. Those who remember, that's why we signed it down, I think, a few times. So, because that changed, the legislature changed. First, I would need, to review it, answer any questions, and then hopefully have a motion to accept this as the warning. So it's the standard language. It's the warning of the annual meeting for March 4th and then the election for March 5th. The top part indicates that we would be meeting here at Southwest Tech School, the Assembly Room. And you could, you could attend the meetings remotely via Zoom. And it gives the ID number, the passcode, the phone number, or the link. Or you could join in person on March 4th, 2024, 5:30. And the business that we are asking, again, from the four to be approved and the moderator would lead this discussion, would be the annual salaries for the board, $1,500 each. The annual salary of the district treasurer, $14,200. The district clerk, $1,200. The assistant district clerk, $600. And the moderator, $100. The board of directors, that reflects the raise that took place two years ago with the motion. The other salaries have remained the same, with the exception of the moderator who went from $10 to $100, once the former moderator retired. Other than that, there's not a change in those dollar amounts. Where the other article, Article 6, is in there every year, is to authorize the school district board to borrow money in anticipation of revenues to meet current operating expenses. Article 7 is to vote by Australian ballot on March 5th for the election and to approve the ability to transact any other business found improper when we need. And then also to warn what the voters would be voting on on Tuesday, March 5th, at the polls. And that lists the four open board members, the school directors. And again, the chair discussed this earlier about the four people who their term is expiring this year and would need to pull or take papers if they are returning or planning on trying to return. And again, those terms are for three-year terms. Article B is what we voted on in the December meeting, which would be our budget of $4,817,556. And then Article C is what we also approved, which would be to put $60,000 in the reserve fund for capital improvements and $20,000 in the reserve fund for equipment, which requires separate lines for voters to approve. The rest of this document states the locations of all of our districts that we serve, where their voting is taking place, the times the polls are open for each location. At the end, it talks about the register to vote and how they can register to vote. It also talks about if they need interpreting services, that they could request that service. And they would call our direct phone line at least three days prior. We would help arrange the services needed for interpreting. And then that leaves a place where each current board member would be required to sign. Once it's signed by everyone here, I have to bring it to the town clerk, and I have to do that by a specific date at the end of January. And the town clerk or the assistant clerk receives it, signs it, to verify that we've turned it in. And then the warning will be published also at the town hall and home at the town hall, as well as the normal places that we can work any meetings. Any questions about the warning?
It's funny that it's not on here. I do see interpreting services on here. That's good. So perhaps in future, some warnings could also include that, at least in the town of Bennington, there's the omnivale service. Now, I don't know if other towns have access to this service, but the town of Bennington does offer the omnivale service for accessibility regarding people with certain disabilities. Like I said, I don't know if other towns other than Bennington have used this, although I know Bennington does, as part of the town's ADA plan. And I know that, and that's been discussed at the state level. I don't know how prevalent it is in the rest of the county, but I would maybe, you know, at least try to mention it if there's the opportunity that certain services beyond interpreting are available. Not, not to speak, you know, of interpreting services. Those are very important. I just want to make sure that, you know, we're letting as many folks know as possible that at least in Bennington, there are additional services for persons with disabilities.
Well, I appreciate that. I also know that there's specific language that are required by law when I do the warning. So I will certainly take that information and verify whether or not one or that would be something I would be able to put on the document. Kind of thing I should be able to, but I think it's just verify it, because it's very specific what I have to say and how I have to say it.
Absolutely, yeah. And I wouldn't want, you know...
Since it's a variation, I would think that it's the responsibility of the town and not us, because we serve so many districts. Thank you. So then, at this point, I would need a motion, so that if there's any other discussion about it.
Move approve for the warning. Second. See, I have a discussion. Sing none, approve the warning.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, we warned last meeting, policy said today we're ready to adopt these policies. First policy is 4001C on sexual harassment. Can we have a motion?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve the sexual harassment?
I would move to adopt the sexual harassment policy.
There we have that now.
Oh, do I have to second it then?
Yes.
I will second it.
Any questions on it? Sing none, all in paper, adopting sexual harassment.
Aye.
Okay. Second policy, 4010C, a decreeance of the policy. Can I have one second? And a second. Any questions on this policy? Sing none, all in paper. Go aye.
Aye.
Okay, number three, 4035C, conflict of interest and higher rate. Some of...
Seconded.
Okay, first and a second. Any questions on this one? Sing none, all in paper?
Aye.
Aye.
I want to thank the Policy Committee for all the work in strengthening these three policies. I'll bring them off the table.
It's the Policy Committee's pleasure, and the Policy Committee will continue to be hard at work moving through all the ones that have not been updated or refused.
Thank you. Next, Superintendent Report.
So I'd ask, on behalf of Superintendent Waller, to do a brief presentation. Superintendent Waller, due to illness, could not make the meeting today. But we felt that it was very important to do this brief presentation, so if you would just allow me a few minutes. We'd like to speak to Dr. Jacqueline Kelly. You chose to serve your community through your representation on Southwest Tech's Regional Company Board since 2013, when you filled the term for residing board member. Since then, you've continued as a board member for the next 10 years. During that time, you served on the Education Committee, Facilities, Housing Committees. You've served as a committee chair for several years and are board work for the last seven years. In addition, over the past 10 years, you've contributed hundreds of dollars, leading our district with tasks such as developing educational goals, hiring administrators, teachers, and staff, listening to staff and students who have concerns, recognizing outstanding programs and student achievements, and so much more that I can't list them all here. The time you spent in board meetings was just a fraction of the hours you devoted to helping lead this district. You also worked hard at training sessions, committee work, taking on leadership roles, community activities. And we certainly can't forget the scholarship that you funded over the years. There's so many students, so many students have received that scholarship. Throughout all of this, Jackie, you've always kept one primary concern at the forefront of your work, that has always been the students that we serve and how we can best help them receive the best education possible so that they can achieve their educational goals. We at Southwest Tech want to thank you for your vital contributions over the 10-plus years to the education of our students in this community. Your love of learning and your concern for providing the best educational opportunities have certainly helped make a big difference for those students over the years. Thank you, and we wish you the best in the next chapter you are about to enjoy. We realize this is formally your last meeting, and you will not be going up for reelection. So we really felt it was important to recognize you. So we're going to ask you to please accept this gift and this certificate right here. And the certificate, right here, is a certificate of appreciation for 10 years of service. And we really would like to acknowledge Dr. Jacqueline Kelly for your commitment and dedication to Southwest Tech. Thank you. Thank you. If someone wants to present us, so this will be Southwest Tech here. Thank you. So thank you very much. We really appreciate everything you've done, and I just thank you personally. Thank you. And that is the Superintendent's Report at this point?
Yep. So again, in my report, I just want to note that there's four positions open in the next election. The positions are Mike Cutler's position, Asher's position, Jackie, who's leaving, and Anthony Williams. And hopefully, they'll decide to run again. And your paperwork has to be in by the 29th of this month to the town clerk here in Bennington. Also, in February, we will not have a meeting as usual, unless there's some type of urgency where we have to be called in for a meeting. Any other thing to come before the order?
The only other, I just wanted to, again, reiterate, those of you who are online, if you could please make sure and reach out to us tomorrow or the next couple of days about when you could come in to sign the warning or if you need accommodations, so that we can obtain your signature. Thank you.
Okay, really, but I have one little thing. I want to address, so... Late last year, Superintendent Waller shared, let's stick with Ken and myself, regarding the gender makeup, you know, with girls in each class. No surprise, classes like Forestry had mostly, you know, women. Classes like Forestry had mostly, you know, boys. And pertinent to a concern... And pertinent to a concern from a constituent. I wonder if it would be worth looking at in future meetings in the new year, whether or not I'm lucky enough to be reelected, whether or not, you know, we choose to take this on, looking at how we can perhaps bridge the gap in certain classes. So that way, we're providing, or rather encouraging more opportunities for courses that are stereotypically dominated by one group of students to perhaps have more from the other group. Now, whether or not that is going to be successful or that's something that we want to take on, I just wanted to bring it up as something that I saw as eye-opening, not particularly surprising. I just wanted to bring it up especially because a constituent brought it up to me regarding encouraging our young people to pursue all sorts of academics, whether or not they are stereotypically predestined to engage in them. So that's all I have, and I just wanted that to be on record for future meetings, so that way we can maybe take a deep dive or a committee can take a deep dive moving forward.
I, I personally think it should be part of the Education Committee.
Oh, really, dear? Anything else? No.
A little secure.
No, wait, wait. There's somebody else.
Oh, okay.
I think he was just doing a thumbs up to a green. I saw a movement.